The one policy question I had was that childcare subsidy on that was raised, is that not in the contract anymore? Or is it in the contract and we're taking it out because of the...
Subsidizing, they would look at other grades, comparable programs. And it was like a required target, which is what we do.
It doesn't need to be a fourth policy.
Yeah, maybe we're always looking at market rate for all the programs.
Yeah. Is that because it's in the contract or is that...
Uh, I don't know.
Okay.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, whenever that was created.
Yeah. I mean, that was a huge big question I had when I saw it. I was looking through it.
Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order and ask everyone to rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening and welcome, everybody. We are going to start tonight with some introduction of staff and some new hires. So I'm going to turn it over to Rebecca Higgins and then ask her to step forward.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Today, I bring forth Rebecca Higgins, another Rebecca down in the Little Hornets. We are thrilled. Rebecca is coming to us as a first-year teacher. She is a recent graduate of Western Michigan University, where she obtained her element, her teaching certificate pre-K through three with that early childhood and special ed endorsement. We're very fortunate to have her. Even though she is starting her first year as a teacher, she has had a lot of experiences in the internship years and other early childhood classrooms. She did her internship in a kindergarten classroom in Fowlerville Community Schools, as well as taught in several different preschool classrooms around the area. So Ms. Higgins engaged in the interview process, as is customary for Williamson, where there was a panel of interviews. And during that panel of interviews, it really, her strong knowledge of early childhood shone through. She really talked about literacy development, the importance of literacy development, as well as the ability for a child to move in the classroom, as we know our youngest learners need to do, and finding the ways to introduce content while they are moving. Another characteristic that really shone through was her respect for the individual child, as well as kind of teaching through that hands-on learning process that we know is really important for that youngest learner. The third thing that really was pronounced in her interview was the ability to create strong relationships with both the child as well as the family. That was one thing that she felt was really important to her and to the classroom. Talking to her references, they described Ms. Higgins as compassionate, organized, flexible, and patient. And so they spoke highly of her eagerness to learn, which is something that we strive for in Williamson, having that role and mindset and that ability to grow and learn throughout your professional career, as well as individualize that instruction for students. So based on that, her previous experiences, as well as her education, I bring forth this recommendation with confidence. Thank you.
Do you have any questions? I'm gonna ask for a motion to, for hire for Rebecca.
I make a motion that the Williamson Community Schools Board of Education hire Rebecca Higgins to be a teacher for Little Hornets preschool beginning with the 2025-2026 school year.
Second. Okay, so I have a first Sarah, a second Heather, any other discussion? All in favor?
I have.
Any opposed? Okay, I also am going to ask for a motion to, I should've done this at the beginning, but I probably didn't. To, I need a motion to amend our agenda to add our next hire of Spencer Gillian.
Move to amend the agenda?
So I have first by Dave, second by, is that Chris?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Good evening, everyone. It's excited to be on this end of things this time. So I am really excited to introduce our new candidate for hire. This is Mr. Spencer Gillian. So one quick note before I introduce him formally. Mr. Gillian was put through the rigor this past week. We were in need of hiring someone for our fifth-grade teaching position, and he showed up. He was ready to impress us, and after the first-round interview, the panel of teachers that I had were like, "We want him on our team immediately." So kudos to you for that. But he went through the process very rapidly, because we wanted to make sure we had a quality person joining our team. So the interview started last Wednesday, and we're done by Friday afternoon. So it was a very fast process, and Spencer was more than willing to participate in all aspects of the process. So we were very impressed with him. Mr. Spencer Gillian graduated from Wayne State University with a bachelor's in psychology. He obtained his interim teaching certificate through the Teachers of Tomorrow program, and he quickly began his career as an educator at Cole Academy East. Spencer has a wide range of experiences as an educator, including working as a paraprofessional in fourth and fifth grade, and then he transitioned to becoming a full-time fifth-grade teacher in the fall of 2021. Spencer was described by Rob Ellis, the superintendent of Cole Academy, as an empathetic and dependable educator. Mr. Ellis continued to express that he has no doubt that Spencer will serve Explorer Elementary and the Williamson community with the utmost integrity. Those who participated on the hiring committee agreed that Spencer will be a great addition to a very strong, well-established team of highly qualified educators. It is evident that Spencer is committed to improving his practice and prioritizing the relationships that he builds with students and staff. And one awesome highlight to share is that Mr. Gillian and his young family are residents of Williamson, and he's expressed his intention to be part of that community for a long time. So we are really excited. So this is my recommendation for hire of Mr. Spencer Gillian as the fifth-grade teacher at Explorer Elementary.
Do you have any questions? Okay, I will entertain a motion.
I motion that the Williamson Community Schools Board of Education hire Spencer Gillian to be a teacher for the fifth-grade year beginning with the 2025-2026 school year.
Second.
So I have a first Heather, a second Dave, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And then we have some, this is staff that we have already approved. Now we're just going to be introduced to them. So I'm gonna ask Catherine to come back and see if she's up here.
Okay.
So, everyone, this is Ms. Brenna Richardson. We are so excited to welcome her to our Explorer staff. Ms. Richardson is our new music teacher. She will be serving both Discovery and Explorer Elementary. One quick note that I want to share about Brenna. Her bright, bubbly, enthusiastic personality shone above all the other candidates that we interviewed. She was ready to put her roots here and become part of the community, and we are just so grateful that she interviewed. She came all the way from the Bear Lake area and is joining us now and has moved here as of yesterday. So she has been super, super busy, but she was an amazing candidate to interview and really just had a great rapport with the students that she worked with in her group, and we are really excited to have her join our teams. So Ms. Brenna Richardson.
Thank you. I was gonna ask for a motion, but we've already done it. Steve, I believe you have someone to introduce us to.
Good evening, this is Maya Boyd. She was previously hired in the spring. She is going to serve as a counselor at Williamson High School, starting this current school year. She came to us with a bachelor's degree from Ball State with a major in sociology, a minor in counseling and women and gender studies, and she went right into her master's degree at Ball State and graduated this past summer with a major in school counseling and a certificate in identity leadership. Over the last two years, Maya has completed 1,000 hours in counseling through internship and practicum experiences, which is basically the equivalent of a full school year over the last two. In addition, her references, when I spoke with them, were outstanding. They reported she'll be an exceptional counselor. One said, "Along with being a student advocate, Maya is empathetic, patient, understanding, tries to see all the angles, does a great job connecting with others from a variety of backgrounds. You can help those with similar interests connect with each other." And her other references just went on and on and on. So when we interviewed her in the spring, we felt very good about her candidacy, brought her to you, and appreciate you voting her in. She officially started today welcoming ninth-grade students who are moving into the district or were school of choice, but brand-new to WHS. So she was the first official staff member they met. So she's kind of learning the ropes as she goes through it. We got email at the end of the day. We've had another situation arise with some of our academic programming, and she's like, "I don't know what that means." So we have a plan for tomorrow with our other counselor, Michelle Greenleaf, and start working through that. But we're super excited to have her join us. She brings a lot of energy and enthusiasm, and very pleased to introduce her to you. Thank you.
And Cassie.
Hi, good evening. I am introducing Ms. Mickey Evans. Mickey will be joining our second-grade team this year. She is obviously a very well-loved librarian, and she'll be joining us in a different role this year, so we're really excited about that. Mickey comes from Michigan State University with her bachelor's in English, and then just recently finished her master's degree in elementary education from Liberty University. She completed her student teaching with us last fall in Ms. Major's classroom in one of our second-grade rooms. And we just really enjoyed having her. Her fresh lens, her fresh light, love for literacy really comes through and everything. And when talking with her references, they just really spoke highly of her ability to create relationships with students and her willingness to just continue to learn, ask lots of questions, and constantly wanting to improve her practice. So we're really excited to have Mickey with us in a new lens.
Thank you. Okay, now we can get up and congratulate all of them.
I know it's not a bad day. But our first. I know, it was a busy day.
That was quite a crew. The next part of the meeting is any citizen comments. Do we have any citizens in the audience that would like to address the board? Okay, moving on to celebrations.
It's like we just lost our audience.
I know. I did tell them all they could exit.
So as you might, first of all, good evening and welcome officially to the beginning of a new school year. As you might imagine, over the summer, we accumulated quite a few celebrations, and I'll try my best to summarize some of those, starting from a couple of things that happened a couple of months ago. First and foremost, moving through some stories on the website. I'm sorry, Dave, I'm gonna go backwards here, but at the end of June, mid-June, we found out that the district was going to be a recipient of the United States Tennis Association grant. This is something that was worked on for about six months. Mr. Paige Paulson, our athletic director, was the lead on this and stuck with it, even though it was a very competitive grant and with a lot of requirements. But he stuck with it. And the $200,000 awarded to the district is the largest single grant that USTA has ever awarded a school district. And that money will go towards significant improvements on top of what the bond is supporting with the tennis facilities and the work that's taking place there this summer. You'll get an update on the progress of that later on this evening. Also on the website is an article featuring Ms. Kluzag, our Explorer Elementary principal. I think we've had a chance to meet her already, so we'll move on from that. In July, our clay target team, which is in its second year of competition as a club sport at Williamson Middle and High School, participated in the national tournament of representing the 1,000-top clay target shooters in the United States. I think there were teams from somewhere around 35 different states represented there. Team did extraordinarily well with two of our shooters placing the top 400 and one student, I think, ranking 68th, if I'm not mistaken, in the country, 64th in the United States, which was pretty impressive, because he hit 98 of 100 targets. So I'm trying to figure out what she had to do to get higher than 64th. I guess hit them all, I'm not sure. But very, very impressive. By all accounts, the kids had a great time. There was a ton of media coverage of this and the boost it had for the local economy with all those teams coming in from around the country. But great job, much appreciate, a lot of appreciation for Cliff Hart and his vision to kind of get this going and coach the team, and Bob Young, our former police chief, and a ton of volunteers that made this happen for our students.
And can I ask, are all, are those all Williamson students? Or do we share this with like Hazlitt or Oakness, or are they all Williamson?
It's primarily Williamson students, but Cliff has opened the club up to students from other schools who do not offer this opportunity for their students.
A lot of kids, nice.
Yeah, there's a lot of kids.
It's about half the team. My son's on that team, that's only about half the team.
Half of the team?
Well, those, right, so those are the ones that I think qualified to move on. They're supposed to state-level competition, so you had to kind of move through that. So it's a nice-sized group. Culminating just last week was Kids Camp 2025, run by Rebecca Olson, who was here previously, and her outstanding staff. I know the board's already familiar with that summer program that's done every year, but continued to just do really creative things, the different themes that they have for each of the week, each of the weeks, and the involvement and engagement of students. It's, it takes place at school, but it's very different from school, if that makes sense. And kids had a great time. I think she has a phenomenal staff recruiting educators from around the area who come to work for her in the summer, many of whom teach or work in other school districts, including some of our own. And just a really great job all the way around. So just want to make sure to publicly acknowledge that and make sure the board was understanding of the hard work and success that went into that program this summer. It's also just great for me personally, still seeing kids literally right outside the window of my office, and it makes it feel like school's still in session. So you remember why you're here, right? When you see the interactions and kids having a great time. And then lastly, not on the site, but you know, this is the start of the new school year. Eight o'clock tomorrow, if you're able to make it, for opening-day events. And I know Brandon Whitearts will be presenting here shortly, but I do want to publicly recognize the work that he did this summer and his team, as well as James Doyle and in our tech department. It's a very, very small group, and they accomplish probably three times the amount of things that you might expect from a group, from a team that's small. I don't think Brandon's sat down for five minutes all summer, and the presentation he's gonna show you is not even close to representative of the amount of things they accomplished. So I do want to say thank you to them, as always. They did a phenomenal job and really set our educators and our students up for success as they return to the buildings this week and next. Those are celebrations for this evening. If any questions that you might have.
All right, moving on. I will ask Brandon to come down.
Do you have the... This is a copy of the previous memo from...
Thank you.
From earlier this summer. The plan for the summer work. I'll just... I'll get you a scroll, bud. Okay, this is the copy of what the budgets were for the big projects we're looking to accomplish this summer when we started. So just a copy of that, so you guys can see what the cost of some of these things were. Like we had the last couple of years, we've been chipping away at the parking lot repairs. So high school is the photo on the right, repairing some of those larger potholes, and we get to crack ceiling there. On the left is the bus loop at the elementary school. We redid it last year, but again, just taking care of the cracks that we have and then seal coating that, just to preserve that investment. We also did repairs at the Discovery, I call it the teachers' parking lot, staff parking lot. Again, just continuing those, investment of those funds from last year. And then we did crack ceiling at the middle school also. Those are the big asphalt repairs for the summer. So next slide, David. The big project, which is, if you go to the high school tomorrow, you'll see is very much still in construction, is the fire alarm upgrade at the high school. Those guys have been, they've just been killing it. They've been here every day. Since they were here on the Monday, school got out, and they were not here on the Fourth of July, but they've been here every day since. They've been working in the weekends, just trying to get this done. The state inspection is scheduled for Wednesday as of right now. We don't have a time on that yet, but we're hopeful that everything goes well with that. The, you'll see like the devices, like in here, they're on the wall. The high school, they'll be on the ceiling, a law for better coverage. There's also a new law with the state that has to be voiced alarm. So it's a voice saying "fire, fire, fire," instead of just the loud horn that we're all used to. This is, yeah, this is a huge improvement. We've had, I don't know how many sleepless nights I've had being woken up by the fire alarm, just because we've had issues, and it's, you know, original to the high school. So it's well overdue.
So can I ask, so it won't make, it doesn't make the noise? It just makes the voice that says "fire, fire"? Or does it do like a "baaah"?
Yeah, it'll be like a, yeah, it'll be yes, like that. I'll let you do it, I won't, I won't try to... You got it, Nancy.
What's with your voice?
There we go.
We're gonna use your voice on that, right?
Next slide. This is continuing our safety, specifically with the bus drivers. We added a card access readers like we already have throughout the district for all the buildings. So the drivers now have a card, so they are allowed to scan in and out of the parking garage or the bus garage. So we know who's coming and going, and it's not really a free-for-all like it usually is. We also added the intercom system for Pam, so if someone shows up there, a delivery driver, anyone shows up that doesn't have access, they can hit the intercom, and Pam has the video and is able to communicate with them. So they're just not walking in freely. Next slide. High school, again, just chipping away at where we've found loopholes or potential ways to get past. So now at the high school, like we have at the middle school, like we have at the elementary school, once someone is in the office, you actually need to scan to get out of the office, unless you go out the, actually exit the building. But any way to get into the high school now from the office, you have to physically have the card read, the card to use on the reader to get out into the hallway. So that was like, I don't know how familiar you guys are, but that's the athletic counseling office. We put that on that door, and then there's a door kind of in the middle of the office by the male slots for the teachers. Security film, the photos are of the high school. The one on the left is the art room, and the one on the right is the production room. This is not actually security film that's on these, but security film pictures are pretty boring, because when security film's up, you don't actually, you can't even tell it's there. I showed Adam the other day kind of how to, how to see which windows have that or not. But this is also just part of that whole project. So it's just a perforated film, makes it more difficult to see into the classroom. And that's just another one of those vulnerable spots where it's easy to see in those rooms, see what's going on, if we don't watch too. And then from those rooms, you're able to see out in the hallway clearly. But we added film to the math-science rooms at the high school and the F pod. We added it here at the middle school, next to the doors. There's a side light window that goes on the hallway, so we added it in those spots also. And then we had a few windows at the Explorer office that we had to also add it to.
So the math-science pods, we had done the inside a year or two ago, and this summer was the outside, where you had those big glass windows looking outside.
Next slide. Rebecca, she was able to secure a ton of grant funding this year. So like, really at the elementary school, that's what a lot of the big work was, was down in the Kids Corner area. So we added flooring in A14, A15. It's similar to what we've done the last couple of years with some other grants she's received. It's held up really well, and this type of floor we're looking to do throughout the district with the bond. That's A14, 15, that's one of her busiest rooms that she has, which is the before program, after-school program, and then the summer camp program. Next slide. Kids Corner restroom, they're actually coming Wednesday to finish that up, but this is where it is at now. They added a restroom in one of the preschool rooms, was a closet. So this is, we got the flooring done, we painted it, and now the plumber's coming back on Wednesday to actually install the fixtures for that room. Kids Corner playground fence, again, it was secured with that grant funding Rebecca had. And then we supplemented some of it also with the district funding. But we had a 10-foot-tall fence, it keeps, hopefully keeps the balls in the playground. I still see some flying out every once in a while, but I think it's a game for the kids personally. But then we also had the privacy slats, so the privacy slats are six feet up. So it's still allowing the sunlight in for the students, and then it's also adding that privacy for them too. Cabinets, again, in the preschool rooms, these were, I don't know, they had to be original. That's, you might know, when she was in school, maybe, or something. But she has a lot of that history, but I mean, those things are super old. So it was nice to get rid of those, and those match similar to other cabinets, or they are the same to those cabinets that we've done in Kids Corner, the office, the conference rooms over the last couple of summers. This, James from IT really kind of spearheaded the project as far as figuring out what we need to do with this, but we added new projector screens throughout the high school and the middle school. Essentially, the screens we had were square, these are more of a rectangle, so the projector is able to do a larger view, maximizing space for the students. James really spearheaded that, though, figuring out what we needed to do, and then my guys did the install. Next one. And then this is the photo of one of those new screens with the new projector that James secured. I talked to the teacher, Ryan Spain, at the high school. The day I was going around taking pictures, and he just says it's amazing so far. He thinks the kids are really gonna love it. He says the picture's so much more crisp, clear for them. So those will hopefully be utilized pretty good for the students. This one's been on, kind of on our hit list for the last couple of years, and just have not been able to get the contracts lined up with all the work he's got going on. But the football field, the west end of the field really holds water, especially like there by the scoreboard. So we had drainage tile put in there, and then we also did repairs along the track on the visitor's side, on the inside of the track and the field, where we kind of had some sinkholes. So those are repaired also, but that's kind of, the sinkholes are kind of more of a safety thing. The tile repairs get that water out of there and just improve our actual playing surface for the teams. Baseball walking path, so we continued the path that was already there. It was like a crushed milling, which is essentially crushed asphalt really fine. And I'm not sure how long it's been here, it's been longer than I've been here. But we were able to get that path that went from the soccer lot, or from the soccer lot, went to kind of the corner of the baseball field, and as we extended it from that corner of the baseball field to the baseball concession stand. Looks really nice, and again, it's just the accessibility for our visitors.
This was a controversy nine, 10 years ago about whether this was an ADA-compliant pathway. Both sides of the coin were argued, but no, for sure, it's compliant in case there were any questions.
Again, directional signage replacement throughout the district. Just updating some of the signs, they were outdated. Some of the signs, we had a couple at the high school that were damaged with one of the storms around spring break. So a lot of them were faded, but yeah, the transportation was faded. So, uh, a lot of them were faded, but yeah, the transportation was faded, the one down by the, uh, Mitchell Road entrance to the high school, same thing. So did a facelift on those. We also, by the school year was going on, we replaced all the stop signs of the high school and middle school. And then we've also updated our signs, um, like here at the middle school, they'll say event parking in the back. Say, uh, student drop off in the back lot. So we updated those and we matched the scheme that we have on the other directional sign, just to pull everything looking together nicely. Yeah, that's, any questions? Uh, that's kind of, that's the, the clip notes version of the summer. A lot of work.
On top of all of the construction, bond, I guess, bond updates.
Well, they did, I mean, they, they did HVAC adjustments and they installed all the RTAC kits, which are the, um, kind of advanced stop the bleed kits. And those all got put in, you can see there's one in the back corner there. They moved a lot of stuff, I don't know, a more articulate way to say it, but I mean, it's just, this doesn't really scratch the service. There was just a, a lot that was accomplished in, uh, a while.
The carpet on the wall.
That was part of the bond. But we are all celebrating that being honest.
Well, but they also have to still do their normal yearly cleaning and the, what is it, the waxing of the floors?
Yeah, like the stripping and finishing, yeah.
Yeah, all of that, so on top of all that, it's a lot of stuff.
But then with the bond work, it becomes more complicated, so right, like you get everything cleaned out and then they go and they're doing the, the fire system swap out and all the ceiling tile stuff falls down and now it's all dusty and you gotta clean it again, right? I mean, it's just, there's, there's more to it. Uh, it's gonna unfortunately for, uh, maybe it's custodial team, kind of stay that way for at least, uh, three more summers, so, um, but they're doing a great job.
This summer was like the summer of coordinating and I feel like it was like, alright, breaking us in for next summer and the following summer, but. Yeah, it was, I mean, it was trying to get, um, floors refinished, carpets cleaned in classrooms before the new furniture arrived. So we weren't having the installers install the new furniture in the classroom and now we're taking it back on the hallway to finish the floors and clean the carpets. So, um, custodians like really, here at the high school and middle school, really had to move along quickly, uh, to get that stuff done. In the beginning of the summer to beat the furniture. Next summer will be a whole new challenge with flooring going in everywhere, but it's just a taste for the future.
It is truly, I've said this a million times after having a fire and then taking them over a year to do what they had to do to my house, which was not much, and then looking what people did here in barely three months, it is pretty remarkable. So, any questions, Brandon?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and we did get, I did see you got our new bus, does it still smell new and fresh?
Probably. Absolutely, it absolutely does.
You haven't gone out to smell the bus. Very cool. Thank you so much for everything you do and everybody that works under you does. Alright, Adam, superintendent updates or reports?
Alright, we have, uh, no scheduled committee meetings as of yet, uh, next to board, regular board meetings on August twenty-fifth and September fifteenth. Uh, moving on to the aggregate communication data, we ran these analytics, it's been a while. I'm gonna say it's been maybe six years or so even since we, uh, ran these. I was just kind of curious to see, uh, and this is only, um, in regards to my personal, um, newsletter. So the buzz update or the Friday emails, as I think, uh, most of the community calls them. The, um, so I don't know exactly the date, it was before COVID. We had ran analytics, uh, on what the open rates were for those and, and whenever it was we did that, they were about thirty-three, thirty-five percent of the emails were opened. As you can see, uh, that has pretty much doubled, um, over, uh, over time. And so I think as that communication mechanism has become more ingrained, more expected, I mean, I'm hypothesizing here, I don't know, but, but the, the open rate has doubled and so now we're up to roughly two-thirds, um, open, uh, the Friday email, uh, when that goes out, which I think is a, uh, significant improvement. Uh, on the flip side, maybe not quite as positive, uh, we're also able to look at the, the percentage of those emails that after they're open, something is clicked on. Now, you don't need to necessarily click on anything to read through what's the, the base content, but there's a lot of links in there, whether it's for the podcast, whether it's for the news stories that are published on the website, there's links to take you to those. Oftentimes, I'll hyperlink to additional, um, information about other topics or a deeper dive that there's something that you're interested in reading about. And at the bottom of the email, there's also links to a lot of different district resources on a variety of different topics, from how to reserve a facility to the school calendar and, uh, all types of other things. So, that might not be the percentage that we want, but on the plus side, uh, we've seen a doubling in terms of the percentage of folks that are opening, uh, those newsletters. And again, I can only run the analytics from my own newsletter, but I, I thought it was worth looking into and then sharing out the results with the board.
Can I ask, and again, I'm not a computer person at all. So, you're sending, does, by reading this, you're sending this out to two hundred, two thousand two hundred and eighty-seven emails, roughly. So, do, why is it not delivered to two thousand two hundred and eighty-seven emails? Because it says delivered, like on some of these, like seven fifty-seven?
There's a little key at the very top, uh, that we kind of made to show, it's like a little gray box thing. So delivered, delivered is just, it was sent to a person, but they, they did not open it.
They didn't actually open it.
Adam, one question that I have, and, and this is just a follow-up from previous conversations, which was before we moved over to the new website, we talked a little bit about the fact that there's really no way for someone that is an alumnus, or someone that is a community member, or someone that had kids in the district but would like to keep in the know of what's happening in the schools, to sign up for the newsletter and to be able to get that? Have, has there been any continued look at if there is a way for people, for us to be able to allow for people to stay connected?
Yeah, we, we did look at that and there was, um, there was a holdup on how their email would work with, uh, school messenger system. I don't remember the details unfortunately right now, but I can look into that more and get you a better answer.
Could we, um, because I'm guessing the emails that we're doing this to are in power school. So like when our twelfth graders leave, power school shuts down.
There is, I think, I think there might be a way to manually add, I just, there was some issue that came up at the time and I, I just can't recall. One of the things though, I think the more fully answered the question, is we've tried to, um, diversify the different communication modalities that we're utilizing to reach folks. And so one of the, I think the big successes we've had are, are with folks that aren't social media, don't have a child in the school anymore, uh, but still live in the community, uh, we're using the, the newsletter that's, uh, hard copy mailed in, in May. And I've gotten a lot of feedback from folks about, uh, appreciating that, that communication. And then, you know, we tried to reach other segments of our constituency as well through different types of presentations or the, the fifty-plus alumni, uh, event that was held back a couple of weeks ago. So I mean, there's a lot of different ways, um, and, uh, we just kind of try to continue to diversify those offerings to try to make sure that all the folks who are either living here or have a vested interest or graduates, et cetera, are, are getting that, uh, that information. So definitely not perfect, communication's always complicated, but I, I think we've made significant progress.
Adam, do you ever get any feedback about the electronic board? Do people ever mention to you that they read those or they appreciate that information?
Yeah, I, I, I think so. I, I don't know that it's been like the most successful initiative we've done, but, um, I, I do think it, it creates a kind of reminder, some big events, and there's like some fun celebrations too that we've been able to post up there that, um, maybe people visiting in the, in the community or attending something at the park or catching a movie downtown, uh, whatever it might be, they'll see that they might otherwise would not have noticed. So I, I think it's, again, it's just, it's additional layer. And if you kind of think of it like, you know, we're trying to like weave all those together and the closer we kind of tie all those pieces together, the less likely it is someone will not be informed about what's taking place in the district. So, I think, I think the sign's been a positive thing and I think the location in particular is a, a particular advantage.
Any other questions about that?
Good job, that's so much above the national rate.
Alright, bond updates.
Bond updates, uh, as, uh, I think you know, none, none of the projects are done, but on the flip side, they're almost all done. Uh, or almost all on schedule, so I'm being a little bit facetious, but I mean, it's, we're, we're getting there. So as far as the projects that we were trying to get accomplished over the course of the summer, tennis is, uh, is close, I think everyone on the board should know, but just in case, uh, for folks watching at home, uh, the, the really bad rainstorm we had a couple Mondays ago, they knocked power out for, for, um, several hours to a couple of days, depending on where you lived in the community. Uh, that washed out on the western of the courts, the soil underneath the new concrete. And what that caused then is the concrete that cracked, so they had to re-excavate all that, re-pour the cement and redo, uh, all of that work. So that created a domino effect that put the project about a week behind. This week, or actually today, the rest of this week, the tennis team's getting busts so they can practice elsewhere. Uh, the plan right now is we'll take possession of the courts on Friday and that they'll be able to, uh, start practice here, um, next week. Doesn't mean the courts are completely finished, uh, there's a lot of aesthetic, um, components that still need to be done. And they'll have to be coming back throughout the fall to do some touch-up work. The shed's not in, the shed won't be in, the shade structure roof won't be in, so there's, they'll be building it, uh, over the next, uh, several weeks to kind of get it all squared away and look the way it's supposed to. But the, the plus thing in the immediate future is that we anticipate being able to get the student athletes, uh, onsite next week, pending any other unusual, uh, circumstances that might, uh, develop over the next four days.
Can I ask a question about the tennis courts? So, did that happen to the tennis courts because of the amount of rain we had, or just because it wasn't totally completed?
It was just bad luck, it was the amount of rain that we got.
So what happens if we get, in a month, get that much rain? Is that gonna happen again?
Well, I think one of the things they identified, so maybe it's a blessing in disguise, is again, and the project wasn't completed, so you have a halfway finished construction project, it's more likely to be, um, adversely affected by weather. But what, one of the things they discovered was the need to put in some additional drainage and so that's kind of heading to the, the, to the delay. But having that additional drainage put in, uh, will hopefully keep that from occurring again once it's completed. I mean, we've had torrential rains in the past and we have had the courts wash out, so I think it was probably a combination of
redoing them and
weather and the fact that it was like mid-progress, yeah.
Whatever the finishing pieces were, okay.
Uh, softball is, uh, not skit, well, so softball, I remember, and I keep bringing this up because I think this is important, wasn't originally supposed to even begin until the summer of twenty twenty-seven. So, uh, as you can see out back, uh, a lot of progress has been made and Chrisman is really pushing to have that completed, not just phase one, but the entire project completed in February. And so that will bring another season online where the girls will be able to play their games and, and not get rained out for, or two or three days because the field doesn't drain and they're not able to access the playing surface. Uh, so that is a, a very positive, um, plan. Today, the dirt arrived, uh, for the drainage in the infield on, um, these giant semi trucks. There were lots of them, um, going through downtown and kind of suspected they might be going to the middle school and, and there they were. Uh, so there's huge piles of this specialty dirt, um, I don't know all the details, but it'll, uh, hopefully be a really nice touch as part of the project. So that's still on pace and you start, should start to see the block go up over the next several weeks as you start to build out the daisies, the press box and that concession storage, uh, facility. Uh, lockers, uh, high school and middle school lockers, uh, they are all in and, uh, installed with combinations other than a couple one-offs here and there and, um, numbers obviously that line up with the combinations for students. The, uh, there's still some aesthetic pieces, I'm sure you've seen, uh, today or, uh, in the past, the, the bases that go on the bottom need to be installed. There's some, uh, fine tuning that needs to be done on some of the edges. Uh, so those are all in the progress of being done, but the bottom line is lockers are, are in. It was really close at the middle school, but, um, they'll be ready to go. Uh, the combination assignments for middle school students were pushed back from today at orientation till Thursday at open house, just so the office had time to take the combinations, upload this in the power school. And we're trying to get all that done in two hours this morning, because if you have, if you make a mistake with that, you're gonna have to redo the whole thing. Sixth graders are really already kind of anxious about lockers and, and so I think it was a really good decision to just push pause for a couple of days. They'll all be back here on, uh, on Thursday night and then they can practice getting into their lockers, decorating them, all that stuff. But, uh, as, we were doing a walk-around today with, uh, French associates for the flooring project for next year and so I got to overhear a lot of parents commenting about how beautiful, uh, the lockers looked or what a night's improvement that was. Um, so they were, they were definitely noticed even though they're not completely, uh, installed. Well, they're completely installed, but not completely, uh, aesthetic portions, I guess you could say, because they're not completely done. And then, um, lastly, for furniture, um, that has been in for a while. There's still some items that are backordered for both the high school and the middle school. I don't know that anyone will necessarily notice that, but as those, uh, products start to come in over the rest of this month, in September, they'll kind of get integrated into the, uh, into the classrooms. I know there's one or two rooms that are still waiting on like, the tops are, have not arrived, but the legs are there, so we'll get creative with those. And there's a couple places where the heights of the chairs might need to get swapped out with a different classroom. So, it's not a hundred percent done, but you really want to know it, the students will know it. And, um, as those additional, uh, pieces of furniture get added on the skid, like I said, integrated into, uh, the classrooms accordingly. So, those are the, the updates on the projects that we have for the summer. Uh, there continues to be, uh, a lot of time invested in planning for next summer, which will be, uh, at least twice as complicated, if not more. But that's gonna include things like the paving outside of the high school, uh, flooring at the middle and high school, which is part of the, the baseline work that we started, uh, doing today. The pool pack, which will be really interesting, watching that thing come out of the ceiling of the pool, uh, sometime this spring. And that's the HVAC system that the pool is built around. And then obviously the flagship, uh, part of the, part of the bond will be the, the beginning of the construction of Explorer Elementary, uh, March, April timeline. So, those are your bond updates, uh, for this evening, uh, happy to answer any other questions that you might have.
Any questions for Adam? Alright, moving on, uh, board committee reports.
Uh, so we met, uh, before our last regular board meeting. Before that started, Adam gave us a quick breakdown of where we sit for the last year. Uh, happy to report that all nineteen ninety-seven and earlier policies have been reviewed and updated, so that's a, a big threshold for us. Last year, we have added eighteen new policies, revised twenty-six and removed thirteen. Uh, and of course, of those new policies, fourteen of them were for Title IX, so those are on hold in limbo, but, uh, still the work was done. And then for this meeting, you'll find all the policies in your packet, a couple of call-outs. We did review some language in the secondary school handbooks around threats. And then we were asked to review textbook adoption and instructional resources, uh, so we made some suggestions on some small verbiage changes there.
And those are all under discussion, correct?
Yes.
Alright, so if you have any questions about the board policies, we'll do that in discussion. Uh, moving on to discussion items, the open airways for school.
So at the, as things ramp up, uh, our staff are extremely busy and, uh, so I want to make sure I give credit due, even though she's not here. Uh, this is all Amanda Galinas, our district nurse, this is her initiative, um, but I said I would cover down, uh, on this for her this evening and she's been extremely busy getting all the medical and safety components that she's responsible for in place. Uh, so open airways is a, um, a program, it's a, uh, school-based asthma education program. It's really targeted at students, um, with asthma and it's a way of kind of combining a, um, information educational component with kind of an inherent support group for those students, uh, inside of a school. There's a, a core curriculum that, um, that entails. And, uh, there's also obviously a, a parental component where they, uh, opt into having their child participate, um, in that group. So, uh, we would consider this, uh, to be curriculum. So, uh, because of that, uh, we wanted to make sure the board was supportive of having this added. I think it's a, I think it's a really great initiative that will benefit, uh, families and, uh, students who are interested in receiving the support and, um, bringing it to you tonight for your consideration. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer those and if I can't, uh, I'll get the answer from Amanda.
So it looks like there's one session for elementary kids, and then this is AOT times, is that both?
Yeah, so that would be for the, for the secondary.
So middle school and high school?
So my understanding was, it was only middle school, but I can confirm.
No, I mean, that would make sense.
Really just has to do around the time slots that they'd be able to facilitate the, the program.
So is she going to run this regardless of numbers? Like if we only got two kids that registered, would she do it with those two kids?
I, I think that would probably be yeah. Yeah, I I think that would be up to her her discretion as to whether she would do that or not. But step one is before we can actually make this public and try to get kids interested in it, and parents need to make sure the board's supportive of it.
Are there any questions about this? I did go to this this link, and it has a lot of information on it. So if you didn't have a chance to look at that, you can. And it is interesting, they talk about the increase of kids that are getting asthma. So probably some really good, or there looked like there was some good information.
Yeah. It did have a question. So the sessions for the elementary school, that's just for students? Or is it students along with families?
My understanding was just students, but parents had to provide permission for their child to participate.
Got it.
Any other questions? If you have any specific questions about this, I would get that to Adam. It looks like they want to do their first session by the eighteenth, so that gives her time for us to vote on it in two weeks. So if you have additional questions that you want answered about this, otherwise, we're going to move this forward for a vote so they can go through that. Next is an extended leave request. Is there anything people wanted to add about this?
I'm supportive of a leave as as presented.
So can I ask, is she, so is she planning on starting the year? Or is she off right now?
She's off, and she'll be, and this is just a continuation of that. There's a long-term sub that's very familiar with the district, and will be in place. So this just extends the amount of time that she'll be away.
So I guess I'm going to need a reminder. Did she have her baby last year and then asked for an extended leave? And now we're giving her a second extended leave? Or did she have the baby last year, want to leave, and now she's asking for an extended leave?
Which leave are we discussing today?
Mariah's.
Mariah's? Mariah's baby is due on the twentieth, actually, of this month. So this is her initial request. She's going to take the F M L A and then wants to just extend through the first semester.
Through, okay. Has she had a had a baby like not that long ago, correct?
Probably two years ago, uh, yeah.
Okay. All right, any questions about this leave request? All right. Next, Michigan Association School Board's delegate. This is their year assembly. Last year, it was in Lansing. I attended last year in Lansing. This year, again, it's going to be in the Grand Travis Bay area. I am not going to be here. I won't be here for that board meeting in October, I'll be gone. I'm celebrating my anniversary, actually going away, which we have not done in thirty years. So we are going to be gone if someone else can attend this. We don't have, Betsy, do you know when we have to let them know? By October second?
Yes.
Delegates must be submitted. So we have a little bit, so I guess check your schedule, see if that's something you can do. I do want, this isn't something that we pay for. You know, we don't pay for teachers to take like PDs when they have to go away. So if it's something someone can attend, they do like to have a delegate there for when they're approving basically their bylaws and things in there.
I don't know that I agree with you, because I think in the past, we have paid for registration for the conference, and we've paid for
Well, we paid for the registration, but we do not pay for travel nor the hotel. So if you want to, if you want to attend the conference, we will, we will pay for the classes or whatever that you want to take. This one is a little, I feel like, not that it's tricky, I don't necessarily. They have some basic classes that you can get. None of the classes are the CBA classes, is that?
No, they have CBA classes there too.
They have some, but you have to pay for them.
You have to pay for it.
So you're going to pay, so we pay a fee, whatever it might be, a couple hundred dollars, to attend their general sessions. But if you want to take any of the actual classes that count towards your certificate, like Board one oh one or any of that, you have to pay extra for that. So
And those are also available like outside of the conference?
Yes, they're available online, the cost is the same. So I I do get a little alert that you're paying for a conference for a class that's like not really part of the certificate or whatever. So it's not like you can pick certain classes. But we will pay if you want to go, but we do not pay for your travel or your hotel stay.
It was my understanding, when I went a couple years ago, that they were going to do two years Traverse City, two years Lansing.
That's what I thought too, but that did not happen this year. I think it was only one year in Lansing.
It might have been two, because I did the delegate.
Did you go one year in Lansing and then I did? So maybe it was, so maybe now we're back to the two, yeah.
Um, I I can, I can be our delegate.
Okay. So we usually have, we have to submit one delegate and then an alternate. So look at your schedule alert if that's something you can do. Otherwise, you can send Sarah.
And I would just go for the delegate assembly, I will not go to the conference.
The conference, right.
Yeah. But if somebody else wants to go to the conference, then I will step aside and they can
Do the delegate, no?
Yeah.
The delegate piece is actually interesting. If you ever had time to go, they go over their, basically their policies of what they run. And there's a group that writes them, presents them, and then people can make changes.
Sometimes it's a thirty-minute thing, and then others are a little bit
And sometimes it's five hours. Last year was really long.
And the year before, not so much.
Yeah. Kind of crazy, but. All right, next, moving on, board policies. I'm going to turn it over to Dave, and I guess you kick it around to whoever wants to.
Sure, yeah, most of the revisions are pretty minimal, straightforward. The board's member development opportunities, we just changed the contact person on there. A lot of the others were just minimal cleanup. The policies listed under replacement are swap-outs for Trune policies, and the last set are removed as redundant or no longer needed. Happy to answer any questions about any specifics within these, though.
So you had also mentioned the curriculum policy, is that still being worked on right now? Correct?
It's actually good, because Trune released an updated version about a week ago, based on the Supreme Court case ruling, so.
Good timing.
Time to use, yeah, time is good.
So can I just ask, so the board policies that are being replaced, they're being replaced with the Trune version?
Yeah, I mean, you could. Another way of looking at it would be they're just revisions, but they're complete rewrites, like we're taking out the entire policy that we had and replacing it completely with Trune's policy. So just a different way of labeling it, but I think it might make it a little more clear in terms of the totality of what's what's taking place with that particular policy.
The one that I'm just kind of looking at is the emergency use of seclusion or restraint. Will that be discussed with our building principals? Or just kind of saying, hey, we updated it? Or, I mean, I think when you're talking about seclusion and restraint, we're talking about our kids, so.
Yeah, I mean, as far as
I don't know if anything's in there that's going to change them.
Yeah, as far as implementation goes, it's it's really not anything different than what we've had. It's just the policy itself is much more streamlined than what was in place prior to that. Dr. Cook's aware, if she, you know, feels like it's needed, she could definitely go over that with support staff. We did at our leadership team meeting last week, go through principles and general guidelines in terms of, this is not the policy necessarily and specific, but we clarified some pieces around the utilization of calm rooms and when a calm room goes from serving in that purpose to becoming a seclusion and restraint type of environment. So continuous learning around this, but that's kind of a separate piece from what's the the content of the policy, which is consistent with what we had prior to that, just written in a much more succinct way by the law firm.
Any questions about any of these policies? We'll move those for a vote. Moving on to action items, can I please have a motion to approve our minutes?
I move that the Williamson Board of Education approve the minutes for the special meeting held on July twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I heard Dave. So I have first Deb, second Dave, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next is, we do not have any roll call votes, so separate action items. Can I please have a motion for a leave request?
Make a motion that the Williamson Community Schools Board of Education approve extended leave for Kara Beamer, as requested.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So first Chris, second Dave, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye.
Aye.
That motion carries, I believe, four to three. Approval of board policies, or I'm sorry, approval of board policies to be ad revised or removed.
Move that the Williamson Community Schools Board of Education add the following board policies, three thousand one hundred, property tax levies, three thousand one hundred ten, post-insurance tax compliance, and three thousand one hundred and twenty, post-issuance disclosure compliance.
Second. I'm going to give it to Sarah?
Nope.
That was Heather. Okay.
So why would they have it?
I thought I heard you. Okay, so first Dave, second Heather, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next.
Make a motion that the Williamson Community Schools Board of Education revise the following board policies, thirty fifty budgets and truth in budget, taxation hearings, thirty-three forty, event admissions and fees, thirty-four thirty, surety bonds of district officials, and thirty-five fifty, authorized signatures.
Second.
Okay, so Deb, was that you?
Yes.
Okay, so I have a first Chris, second Deb, any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? One more, the removal of policies.
Make a motion that the Williamson Community Schools Board of Education remove the following board policies, thirty-four thirty, bonded employees, thirty fifty R budget planning rules, thirty-one hundred, annual operating budget, thirty-one seventy, line item transfer authority, thirty-one seventy-five, general fund equity, thirty-two hundred, state and federal fund proposals and applications, thirty-six fifty, cooperative purchasing, thirty-six sixty, bids and quotation requirements, thirty-six sixty R bids and quotations requirements.
Second. Okay, that one I'm going to give to Sarah. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. We have our board goes there, we do have one resignation correspondence. Any citizen comments? No. Any board member reports or requests? I just want to extend, I mean, I know we'll be doing this tomorrow, but I do want to just put in the record to thank everybody who worked this summer. Summer is probably one of our busiest times to get everything done, and it is pretty miraculous how much people do get done. And that includes everything, school of choice, enrollment, I don't know, fire alarms, all, everything.
Looks forward to a great year.
Yeah, crazy. Kids will be floating in these halls very soon. Anything else? Okay, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All right, first Chris, second Deb. Right? Am I that right?
Yes, it is.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.